Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting of Logan County Commissioners to order. Please, today is March 31st, nine o'clock in the morning. Please rise and reflect.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a discerning silence when everybody gets quiet. I'd like to thank everybody that came today to the meeting and appreciate you all taking the time out of your schedules to come and visit with our board. So we'll move on to item three, any citizen desiring to be heard? Hearing none. We'll move on to item four, consideration of possible action on minutes of March 15th, 2020.
Make a motion where approved.
A second of motion?
Have a motion and a second to approve in minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Alright, item five. Consideration of possible action to update and/or change and/or approve acknowledged Logan County five-year SERV plan to include decisions for final design of Coltrane Phase Three, option to drop extension of Schedule 2025 I-35 interchange from the current Logan County SERV plan to bring our five-year plan back into our newly assigned constrained budget allowance. That's how the agenda item is written. So first of all, we've had discussions previously about the SERV plan being a physically constrained five-year plan. And we've asked questions about whether or not counties get a proportional share of what is given. With the cap on it, it's $15 million for each of the ODOT divisions. So do the counties in there get a proportional share? And I think, Shelley, the last answer you gave us was no, they don't. And so we're, I'm a little curious, and I know the board is too. We want to address this right away because we want to get into the Coltrane Phase Three project. But if counties aren't constrained, how is, how can the county SERV five-year plan that was given to us have a negative number on it that says that we're $4 million over? That's kind of an interesting point. I'd like to get cleared up at some point. Although, we probably won't get that cleared up today because I've been chasing that rat down a hole for a while now.
And I'm not prepared because I was coming to talk about the other two projects, so. But I'll be happy to get into that.
Yeah, and this isn't a surprise. I mean, this is a topic that a lot of people have been asking. Right?
Okay.
Okay. Anyway, so if, without, without pause, I'd like to get into our Coltrane Phase Three. We did some potholing. Our understanding is that we've got a report and you guys are willing to make a recommendation or be able to say whether or not it's feasible to do the two-lane version of the three-lane road with curbs and gutters and to do a two-lane road with the ditches, which would save a little over a million dollars off of the current SERV plan. And we're all here to do things safely and to save the taxpayers' money. I mean, the SERV program, you know, we end up building monuments to the transportation commissioners, you know, at some point. I heard one of them say, up at the Capitol the other day, that he was really proud because he could fly over northwest Oklahoma and he could see from the airplane these SERV projects that they were building, which kind of points out to me that might be a little bit large. At any point, if y'all would like to talk about the potholing and the Coltrane Route Phase Three project?
Yeah, sorry it took a little bit longer to get to you. It's been kind of emergency after emergency this year. You know, diastrom and everything else. But we did pothole it. We, it's tied with two lanes and two-foot shoulders and, you know, we might be able to put some four-foot shoulders in there. But we did do a one-to-three, four slope and one-to-two back slope. So it's only a two-foot, it's pretty shallow ditches, so, I mean, I don't like mowing two-to-one, but I mean, as long as you're okay with that, as far as maintaining, then that way, we don't, there's only two places we might have to buy right away, and that's for culverts. So we have to go out a little bit into this right away for culverts, but.
Whereabouts on them?
They're highlighted. They may not be in color on sheet.
But as far as utilities, I noticed you located a gas line that came across the road that wasn't marked by Oki or whoever.
But the service line, we couldn't find it, but there's a meter, the gas line's on the west side and there's a meter on the east side, so we're assuming there's a service line.
Right.
But we couldn't find it anywhere. We did pothole up on, yeah, sheet R6. There's a little, there's a culvert there.
I haven't seen any of it, so I'm sorry. Give me the amendment. Thank you.
Hey, what sheet was you on, Steve?
R6.
R6. Yeah, Green Oaks Way. We did pothole one across in there and it looks like we'll have fun around the cross-section.
So all of the culverts that we would possibly need additional right-of-way are over on the east side?
That's the service stuff. I got one on the west side. There's parcel two.
Okay.
Kind of the bottom left corner, there's two 36-inch metal pipes there. And then there's another one on R7, bottom west, southwest corner sheet. Partial three, which is the current, 24-inch pipe there. But that's, that's pretty much it. There's some driveways that are a little steep, but I think we can, we can flinagle those to get them less than 12%. We might, if we can't, we can talk to the layowners about temporary right-of-way and take their garage back a little farther. We need to get the grade, but other than that, it was, it was fitting pretty nicely in there.
Okay.
Pretty sewer line on the north side, on the west side, the northwest side.
Right.
And we didn't locate it, but we talked to the rural water guys out there and they said that they have moved that out of right-of-way. So that, if you look at plan, you'll see there's two sewer lines there.
Right.
On the old, on the other, the deadwood's location of where they have already relocated.
And I was a bit curious about that because rural water district doesn't provide sewer service.
Well, was it, it was rural water, what did we talk to?
It was, I talked to rural water about the water line farther south on the east side.
Right.
And he said he personally needed all that got relocated. He said they did a little station or something, he did all that on the west side, all the way up to Simmons. He said, "Don't worry about any of that." So I'm going off his, what he told me that he personally.
Right.
Knew that that was all relocated.
Yeah, I'm just, just curious about the sewer because as far as we know, there's no organized sewer system in there. That would be nice to have.
Does anyone else need a set of these?
But it could be an old sewer line or it could be one that comes over from the city of Gatlinburg across Waterloo Road.
I think there's some lagoons.
Well, that could be a collection, it could be a collection of sewer pipe for a four-lagoon because, yeah, but there's no.
I think you were saying there was a right at Wildwood Road.
There's a concrete little station on the west side of the road.
Yeah, he said, "Oh, they did that a couple of years ago." He's like, "They, and you can see it's all cleared out." So they did all that on it, so.
So you say there's room to do this two-lane with shelters and?
Yeah, two, two-foot shoulders. Front slope is going to be three, three-to-one, and we had to go two, two-to-one on the backside.
Which would be fairly steep.
Two-to-one.
Yep.
Now, the ditches aren't that deep though.
Look like one foot.
One, two, two, to the most is, is kind of what the numbers.
Are these going to be concrete ditches or like the rest of the Coltrane, or they just can be regular soddish?
But that's, that's the point. It's up to y'all, the concrete.
So I guess at the end of the day, how much money is this saving on this route than the route that was originally planned?
Well, it's estimated to be right at a million dollars, but, you know, you don't know until you get your design, you get the quantities and everything else in there.
Right. So you're thinking this saves the taxpayers roughly a million dollars?
That's true. I mean, that's better than nothing.
We probably need to sit down and have a meeting with you guys and certainly with the commissioner because this does not meet the design standard, so.
Actually, we're having that meeting today.
Okay.
That's why we're, that's why we're all here.
I would need a little time to prepare for that. I have a whole file on our ADT and the design recommendation, but I didn't, I didn't bring that because I thought we were talking about the other one.
We're going to make, we're going to make a decision today.
Okay. You can. It will be a required complete design exception of the entire project if we are not going to meet the design standard. I need to look at the plans a little closer. I haven't been given that opportunity.
Agenda was pretty clear what we were going to do today.
That you were going to discuss it. I haven't been given the opportunity to see the plans, so it's, I mean, just have to provide my input.
So the, the shoulders is 12-foot driving surface with a two-foot shoulder to the asphalt safety edge, which is approximately another foot, right? So it does have a little bit of slope there, but there's, there's another foot worth of driving surface there or the ability to get off the road. So there's, there's approximately three feet of hard surface that they'll be able to get off on. The thing that concerns me a little bit is the two-to-one back slope. But, you know, if it's sawed in, and I think I saw that called for on the, on the plan, that, that should all, that should be fine through there. Cody, do you remember whether or not there's a lot of, there's, there's some drainage down on one side, but it's pretty close to the Waterloo Road. As far as that, where there's a drainage area underneath that potholes out pretty bad through there.
Yeah, right there at the first intersection coming off of Waterloo to, that goes to the east, there's an area that's fairly level there that has no, has pretty much no drainage there. Other than that, right there at, I'd like to get the road. Just there south of Wildwood, there's another area where the water puddles there, so.
On the east or west side?
On the, on the east side.
Right, but the ones that you've drawn out, I've seen them, thanks. It seems to be, it seems to me that it's all going to drain well. Right, so it, we shouldn't have a problem with anything backing up. What, what type of a rainfall can we expect to overflow those ditches?
You know, that's something I started looking at and just kind of laying out it. And that's kind of something we'll look at in the design phase. I was kind of focused on utilities and whether or not this design will fit. It's going to be a lot of work to redesign it. That would be part of, you know, hydraulic design.
Right.
Probably should have put the dollars or our time in that supplemental for the utilities, but I was kind of scrambling and kind of leaving that on.
Is Coltrane a major collector? I should probably know that.
I don't believe so.
Minor archery, major.
You know, you was talking about saving the taxpayers a million dollars. But is that taking y'all's feedback out of that to redesign the whole project as well? Or are you just saying that you can cut the cost down by a million, but then we've still got to pay y'all out of that million?
Well, that's what we had talked about, that with, you gave me the cost with, with the redesign.
Right.
And when you did the numbers on that, it was savings of around a million dollars. It was just a little over a million, if I remember right.
And that's, and that's just average, as you know.
Sure.
But typically speaking, that's about what you would say.
Okay, that's pretty conservative again, since we haven't completely designed it this way. We did all the quantities and, you know, that number down, so just got a lot of voice holders.
I thought, I thought you guys did a pay item for the, for what a new design would look like. Did I, did I just?
For what our design fee would be or?
No, no, no. What the construction cost would be?
We did.
Okay.
I had to estimate a lot of those numbers and they're pretty conservative.
Right.
It hasn't been, you know, this way. I'm trying to average out a lot of things, including now down the quantities and serps and grading and all that.
Well, gentlemen, I, I would like for us to make a decision today, either to go with the curb and gutter or the two-lane, one way or the other, because we really need to get a decision made so we can get started on this and get this, get this going and get it completed.
I agree. I mean, you need to decide one way or the other. How long's this been on the five-year plan? Seems like we've been beating this horse.
It's been 12 years.
Yeah.
From phase one.
It's a long time coming. I mean, the, the project started, phase one started, what, four years ago?
Construction.
Construction started four years.
I think it was on the plan probably 10 years ago.
It was, but it was all one piece. And then the other part of that is the utility relocation and utility relocation for Phase Three that's on the SERV five-year plan, says like a half a million dollars. There wasn't that much money spent on that mile road on either one of those because we didn't do a lot of utility relocation and there wasn't any right-of-way acquisition. So it's kind of an interesting. So once, once you do that, once you take that out, because all that utility and right-of-way relocation was done up in the north two miles. But instead of, instead of going through and finding out where the money was actually spent on which piece, ODOT just chopped it into three pieces. Yeah, and so that's, that's another consideration when we're talking about the difference in price.
I mean, it's y'all's project. I'll support it either way, but I sure would like to get it down and get it off the boats.
I would too.
I'm okay with.
Cody, you got, you got most of the people that live on that road, on that mile.
I think a lot of them just want it done. They don't, they're really not. A lot of them that I've talked to don't really see the need in putting, you know, buying all the extra right-of-way and putting three lanes in and, because a lot of the houses are pretty close to that road. A lot of the properties are, especially on the east side of that road. So, you know, when, when we go to buying property from people, I mean, they, we get into a lot of money there.
It was my understanding that we went with the curb and gutter section, three-lane, to minimize, to not have to take right-of-way. So that's the deal. We're offsetting the area that it takes for the ditch and going with curb and gutter to carry the water.
In both cases, with two lanes or the three-lane curb and gutter, there won't be a lot of additional right-of-way required. I think you guys identified with the two lanes that there are a couple of approaches that.
Few, few places we.
For the ten-horns.
For the ten-horns, and that, that would be it. And that, that should be a minimal cost.
I do, I do have one other question for you guys, and I think I heard you say that you're not there yet. But what you've shown is you've laid a template of a two-foot bottom ditch, one foot deep, across this entire roadway. That's a template, but we don't know if that'll handle a Q10 or a Q25, right? Because that, you haven't run the hydraulics on that yet.
But I would be surprised if they run a Q25 and a Q50.
But again, it's hard to say without having run the hard numbers.
The numbers that y'all go off, do y'all do the accident assessments, all those also, or?
And I had all that information when I had come to the meeting previously and talked about the accident history. And the history showed mostly right turn accidents. That's why the third turning lane made so much sense. That and because of the development, you know, I think I saw 45 or 48 ingresses, meaning driveways or approaches to the roadway, and that's only with one side developed. I feel like you will be looking at 60 ingress and egress before it's all said and done. That's just from my standpoint, why that design did make sense.
And of course, we were cautioned by people that helped manage the city of Gatlinburg and their roads against the three-lane and turn lane because it causes more accidents than it prevents.
So how much two-to-one slope would you have on this project? I mean, basically the whole mile or?
I, I put it in as the whole mile because it was, it was in and out, in and out, over the right-of-way lines. So two-to-one, just brought it in where I think it would be very workable. We can, we can, I can play with the profile elevation center on profile and that'll pull them in and out. I could probably fine tune that to where we can get three-to-one back slopes in a lot of places or a wide, a wide four-foot shoulder.
I mean, that, that's going to be the tough thing down the road is mowing a two-to-one slope. I mean, I wouldn't want to send my guys out there mowing on a two-to-one.
Well, I mean, with a boat mower, you can, you can get that done, but with a regular mower, it's tough to do that.
Yes.
But you, you should drive up on that north four miles on Waterloo and get an idea of what it's going to take to mow all that. I mean, I'm going to have to hire another crew just to keep up the glory of the road now.
Coltrane.
So can I ask what estimate you gave for complete redesign? Because this will be basically starting square one, right?
Do you remember what our design, design?
I've, I've got that, that, that we did somewhere.
It seemed like it was saving.
And, and.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm walking in because I don't have any of this information.
Well, I provided that to you earlier at our last meeting that we all came together. Yes, yes, and I mean.
And they stuck to the 6,000 on the SERV name.
When we.
Appreciate that.
It was, it was interesting that it took over two months for ODOT to, once we agreed to do that here in this room, it took two months for the funding was actually approved and they were given the green light to start, so.
I think we issued a notice to proceed, and I'm not going to get into all that.
Okay.
I'm on a peace-seeking mission this morning.
Yeah, me too, sort of. So, Monty, I know you said you'll support whatever. I mean, I'm, as the, as the chairman, I don't want to. End, end of half of that road is my responsibility right now. I don't want to push one way or the other. I, I, other than, I do want to save the taxpayers' money if it makes sense for us to do that. See, that's kind of where I'm at, and.
You know, I mean, I'm all about saving money for the taxpayers. I mean, that's my angle at the end of the day. But also, you know, the, the safety factors of, you know, mowing and is, is the curb and gutter more safe than, than the two-lane? I mean, what's y'all's opinion? Is this two-lane with steep slopes just as safe as the other designer?
In my opinion, the turn lane would be safer.
I mean, that's just something to weigh out, you know? I mean, sometimes cheap ain't, you know, ain't actually saving money if it's taking lives or something.
Right, well, we don't want to do anything that's going to take lives. So what about when people swerve and hit curbs? I mean, that normally causes a tire to go flat and the rim to bite and the automobile to go in the rim.
There's places in modestness.
I mean, as far as safety of a curb and gutter road, I, I've got issues with it because I've seen what, what can happen, you know, on, on those kind of accidents. And just because we put a 35 or 45 mile an hour speed limit signs doesn't mean that that's going to be the maximum speed people are traveling down that road. Cody?
I'm, I'm kind of on the hill about this one. I mean, if we, if we can save a million dollars or we can do it the proper, the right way, either way, then it's going to get done. And I think that's more what the, the citizens in the area are concerned about is getting it done, that road to be improved. The only concern I have is us going from a three-lane between Waterloo and Simmons to a two-lane on further north. That, that's pretty much where I'm at on that. At the, at the intersection of Simmons and Coltrane, is that going to be a double turn? Where they can turn left, turn the lane there? Or is that going to be, is it just going to be a single direction all the way? Or is it going to be, are we going to do a double turn lane in the, in the middle there where you got people trying to turn left and right? Like a lot of your major collectors there in, in bigger cities, you know, you've got one single lane where people are turning left and right on. You cause accidents either way. As far as your curbs and guttering, I can see pros and cons to it, you know? That's, it's going to add costs on us because we're going to have to go out and clean the drainage eventually because you're going to get debris that goes into those drainage areas. Where culverts, you know, we, we drain down into culverts and we've got to clean those out eventually and replace them. But I'm, I'm fine with either design, whichever way the board decides today.
Damon, do you have anything you'd like to add to this from a safety standpoint, from a control? You guys see crashes all the time.
I mean, one of the concerns I'm, you know, that I'm thinking, I'm sorry, my allergies are about to.
I feel you.
Is, is when you do have that center turn lane that's uncontrolled and you get two or three cars trying to turn and they start that turn and they're blinded by a car that's continuing southbound or northbound. You know, it's almost better to have it a two-lane or a four-lane than a three-lane, in my opinion. But, you know, again, it's, it's, it's the responsibility of the drivers to be aware of oncoming traffic. But we see it a lot on, on, on division where someone will be in a turn lane, making a turn, and they don't see cars coming because the car's stacked up and they get T-boned.
Happened to a nephew of ours.
Maybe, maybe it did. But I think that. Not that it was his fault, I wouldn't say. Okay, I appreciate you saying that. You know, there's pros and cons to both of it. You know, at the end of the day, we want traffic to flow and to get people off that road if they're turning as quickly as possible and as safely as possible. But with it being uncontrolled, you're kind of leaving it to the device of the, those on that road.
And I think that's what the accident history showed, is that those accidents, those types of accidents are taking place.
Sure.
With or without the, you know, it was the turning accidents that were mostly involved in that.
Sure.
Do you, do you remember, Shelley, do you remember if the majority of the actions, the accidents were closer to the Waterloo intersection there?
I don't.
Or were they spread throughout the mile?
They were mostly turning and I would think the higher traffic volumes as you're getting. Um, they were mostly turning and I would think the higher traffic volumes as you're getting closer would have, you know, all about how many ins and outs you have.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, but I don't remember. It's been months since I've looked at that.
And you say you, you still have the scatter report for that?
Absolutely, yeah.
So I've got a question for you, Shelley. If we, uh, if the board approves the three-lane, which I don't think is as safe as the two-lane, but if the board approves that today, when can we start construction?
How finished are you with plans?
Pretty complete.
There's only a couple of parcels.
Like five or ten years ago, so I'll look at it. It's been a long time since I've looked at it.
So, right away acquisition, a few parcels that, and I'm not even sure that there were a tried thing.
There are none.
Okay. Okay. So, if the plans are ready, there is no reason, what is, are you showing it in? Depends on where you're showing it in your plan, but as soon as you can show it in your five-year plan.
In after, after.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two is what it shows.
In twenty, in twenty-twenty-one. We're in twenty-twenty-one now.
Right.
In July, we'll be in twenty-twenty-two, so.
Right.
Um, we are taking submissions now for July. Turning in plans now for the July letting.
How would that tie to this funding?
Ma'am? The five-year plan already has the funding on that for the three-lane, for the curb and gutter.
The three-point-five?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm looking at the right thing.
Right.
Is, is Phase Two already a hundred percent complete?
Yes, yes, we're gonna do the acceptance. We're gonna walk around and.
Yes, they're doing the final, yeah, the final inspection is being done.
Okay.
Well, they scheduled the time to do it, so we're, everything's complete. There may be a few odds and ends that they need to come back and clean up, but it is.
Okay.
So, is there any way to get that from the Transportation Commission in July if, uh, all things being equal? Like I said, this thing, this thing's been shelved ready for five years.
If it's ready to go, we'll have to do a cursory review, make sure there are no planned, obvious plan errors, that we've got the right quantities. And we'll do the normal review that we do. But yes, it can be placed on a letting. We are taking submission for July letting right now.
Oh.
That's the earliest it could take place.
How long are you taking, uh, for submissions for July letting was the cutoff? Because I would probably need to reform that until they're new requirement, probably by some of.
July, I think. Uh, would be, I'm thinking it's like the eighteenth of April, but I'd have to look.
I think so.
Unless it's Sunday.
Sorry, what was that?
I think it's the third week in April, isn't that when they?
That's the second point I'm looking at.
Yeah.
So, if, if we went with the, the two-lane and two-one slopes, when, when would you be ready to put that on the letting? What do you think that, I mean, just for conversation here?
Well, we, we got, right away, we'd have purchased, right? Just two parcels. Two parcels, and we might be able to finagle with the army corps. Take them a call. Design-wise, uh, a couple of months at least.
I was about to say, so you're talking a couple more months before you could even start letting on that because you have to completely re.
We have to do the redesign, we have to do the hydraulics again just to make sure all of that, so.
So that would be not earlier than September, a letting, uh, to get all that done and to then. So, October, that means, uh, you guys don't like to start construction projects in the wintertime, right?
No, not preferably.
Right, I get that.
So, so if y'all redesign this project and then you're gonna look at it and say, well, we know this is gonna qualify or this is gonna qualify, or if we're gonna go down that road again as well.
You know, I hope at the end of the day, um, if that is what your designer, who is stamping the plans, who is saying he's okay with that, if that's where you guys land, it's just gonna be well documented. I'm gonna document my recommendation and we're gonna go on. I'm not siding you guys on this.
Right.
I, I, I make my, you know.
I'm glad to hear that because we're about to talk about I-35.
Yeah.
I didn't bring my boxing gloves.
I don't think you're the ones gonna need them for that one.
Sorry. No, actually, that's gonna be an easy one, so I'm ready to knock this one out.
I'd say the taxpayer standard, they don't care if it's got a two-to-one slope while they're driving on a smooth surface.
Right. Well, it, the, the taxpayers of the rest of the county, I mean, Coltrane Road's been quite a topic of conversation, you know, for all of us, right? Why, why are you spending, by the time we get finished, what is it, five miles, it's gonna be a little over twelve million dollars.
Right.
Right, for five miles of road. Uh, and gosh, you know, it's a nice road, I'll give you that. It's a way nice road. Uh, what do, they call that, the Indianapolis Five Hundred?
It's the New York County Speedway.
Yes, it is, yeah, absolutely. And we'll be taking up a four-way stop there later on that, but. You know, I, I wanna do what's best for the, for the citizens too, and we need to get this done as well. And, uh, so.
Well, where we're at with the, with the, with the redesign and everything, it's gonna be another year before we can get started again, correct? About that.
Before we bust ground.
Yeah.
If, if we change it to two-lane, uh.
And I'd also point out, this, this is something that just really stands out to me is that you've got four miles of four-lane where there's a more rural, two miles, okay, two miles of.
Two-lane.
But, okay, I apologize. Two-lane with five-foot shoulders, right?
Right.
Is that the typical?
Four-foot shoulders.
Four or five.
And then we're gonna narrow it down when it becomes more congested to a two-lane with two-foot shoulders. I mean, so, I don't know. To me, that's.
I can only say if it was in my district, I would probably lean towards the curb and gutter. That, that's my district. This ain't my district.
But it's, but it's our county, sir, and, and I appreciate your, your input, and if you wanna make that recommendation, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm, like I say, it's not my project, so.
Cody?
For the sake of getting it done, I mean, I would, I would, I would recommend the curbs and guttering so we can get it done, get it over with. And we're not, we're not waiting another year of having to pay to patch potholes and do deep patching. Uh, and I know saving money is, is, is a big one, but, uh, yeah.
So is that the?
I would, I would make a recommendation or motion to approve that.
That's a motion. Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll, I'll say it anymore.
Okay, thank you, Monty. So have a motion.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a, I have a motion in a second to continue with the three-lane curb and gutter design and to get that, uh, done, completed, updated, and to ODOT for a July letting. Any further discussion on that?
No, I've just asked Stephen to please hurry so we can get on that July letting.
Yes. Yes.
I hope on everything, we're training again to put it in project order and do all the red pegging stuff and just get it done.
Getting it. Good.
And if it boils down, I, what I was gonna offer is if I have to request a sixty-day submission, I'm not in favor of that, but if, if that helps you, I'll certainly do that.
What does that mean?
That gives you another, it gives them additional month.
A little more time.
For a July letting.
For a July letting.
Sweet. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you all. All right, so, um, any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. Here you go, now, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right. Now, we're gonna talk about, on the same item here, the I-35 interchange.
My pickle.
Yes, I'm gonna let you have that one.
Uh, as far as this, you know, I've talked to you a while back ago, we just got that information. And you said that we were supposed to sit down with, uh, try to get a sit-down with Kevin Calvi and, and, uh, meet on that. Have you gotten any information back from him?
So I got an email back from Commissioner Calvi of Oklahoma County.
Thank you, thanks.
They do have, uh, several concerns, um, and at this point are not really looking at participating in this, in this project either.
I've got a lot of concerns myself.
So, and, you know, and that's, and I, I knew you were new to this, and that's why I wanted to bring you in and say, hey, this is where we're at on this project. This is the agreement we have with Logan County and with Oklahoma County as well to partner in this project. So really to bring you up to speed and answer any of these questions that you may have, um, and just not hit you blind-sided with it, you know?
Right.
Really just to, to get, get as much information as you needed to help, to help you make a full decision. Um, but, but back when we first started this project, we were looking at this interjan, interchange to help with the, the congestion and the growth out in the area. It's an outdated interchange, you know, so we're looking at our system, trying to improve it. And while we were there, uh, the, the, both counties at the time thought, hey, this is a good opportunity for us to improve our system as well. And that's where these agreements came into place, so.
And I understand, and, and, you know, I've been, I've been coming through this contract left and right. And, uh, when the contract was first signed, or the agreement was first signed, my contract was, uh, it said that the, the total project cost, uh, for that was gonna be thirty-three thousand, twenty-three million, five hundred thousand. Then the cost for the counties, for Logan County itself, was gonna be right around twenty-seven hundred. And, uh, or two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, sorry, two-point-seven.
Yeah.
Sounded like a bargain.
What's that?
I said it sounded like a bargain.
Right, right, oh, for it. Well, so.
We're in.
So as I started going through here, of course, you've got two different, uh.
Yeah.
Alternatives for this project. And a lot of the right-of-way acquisition that I see as far as for the initial plan, which doesn't go completely to, uh.
So, I'll, I'll explain those two exhibits if you'd like.
Okay.
The one, the one that is shortened is if Oklahoma County and Logan County do not intend to participate.
Okay.
That's us, that's what we're gonna do.
That's Alternative Three.
That's, yeah, that's gonna be us redoing the interchange, um. But, but, that's us redoing the interchange without Logan and Oklahoma County participating in that portion. And then the other one, where you see it going to Sooner and the Air Depot, that was where Logan and Oklahoma County said, hey, we wanna play, this is where we're, this is, these are the extents that we wanna take. So really, I was showing you is if, is if Oklahoma County backs out, we need both, we need both counties to participate in this.
Right.
If one county backs out, it, it, it kind of just, the whole thing goes away.
So pretty much what I, what we've, we've heard in that email is that Oklahoma County is backing out of the deal.
As of right now, that is what I'm getting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm so proud to hear that from you because I was really hoping that you were coming to the meeting with the loaded forty-four saying, you guys are still on the hook and we're gonna make, yeah.
No, if, if, if one county decides that they do not wanna participate in this, then, then we won't, we won't do the extents from Sooner to Air Depot.
The only, the only concern that I had is right now you're at sixty-five percent complete on your estimates as far as, uh, the, for the right-of-way acquisition for the, and the utility movement for, and any alter, or outside, construction costs outside of the interchange. So, and, and right now, we're kind of almost to that point, to that five million, five hundred thousand that we were supposed to be initially responsible for, which, our portion of that, which would be two-seven, uh, would be covered by what we already have set aside in the SERV plan.
Yes, sir.
So we would not be responsible for any outside costs outside of the three million dollars that we already set aside. For me, I don't know if the extent of work, uh, because on both of these, there's uh, two different types of right-of-way acquisitions on, that I, that I see here. And one of them cuts into On-Q and the other one cuts into the Trinity development there. But honestly, uh, if we get by and we do what y'all have planned in, in your Alternative Three without the participation of the counties, I think, I think that'll still, still help. And it, it won't have any cost to the county. So, I, I would, I would like to go that route also. Right now, with everything going on with, uh, the constraints that we have in our budget, and, uh, if we can save three million dollars without having to spend it in our SERV plan, then we can go with this plan if that's, so.
Can, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
Did Oklahoma County file or do a formal action or, or document with you all that withdrew them from this?
Not yet.
Not yet, but.
When, but it's not on their SERV plan. That's kind of my, was my question.
When you look at the agreement, Logan County committed SERV funds for their portion, Oklahoma County committed ACOG funds. They never committed any SERV funds to it via this funding agreement.
Okay.
And, and that's why you're showing an encumbrance in the SERV in Logan County and not in Oklahoma County is they never committed any SERV funds to it. It was never part of their CIRB five-year plan.
Right, and so, I mean, 'cause ACOG funds are getting harder and harder to secure because there's fewer and fewer federal funds available for, for these kind of projects anymore. Uh, although, um, you know, we, you guys did a little research down there and, and looked at ways that we may be able to apply for money, right? But there's no guarantees that that's gonna happen.
Yeah, and, and we, we currently have been trying to get into Encompass through ACOG for the twenty-fourty-five letting. And, uh, if, the outcome of today's meeting would be if we pull the trigger on that today. My Deputy Commissioner Lori has been working on that. And, uh, we are pretty much, we're one question away from filling that. We've got, what?
It's done.
Oh, okay, so we're done now.
Eighty-two point five percent.
Eighty-two points, uh, as far as on the Encompass plan for the twenty-fourty-five.
Whether they accepted.
That, whether they accepted or not, that is the issue.
Does it have, does it have sidewalks and bicycle paths?
It has sidewalks.
Yes, it does have sidewalks.
Okay, well, then it might, might get up there to where you finish tenth in a two-force race.
So, uh, the, the issue is, uh, the, what really kind of caught, caught me off guard is because even in our agreement that was set back in two thousand eighteen, I believe, it says that by two thousand nineteen, that the county commissioner at the time was supposed to start looking into federal funds or ways to get grants to approve and get the monies for the project. Uh, and then when you called me or messaged me, I was kind of, whoa, hey. And that's when we started digging and we, uh, went through Encompass for ACOG and, uh, pretty much, we, we've got high hopes there, but, uh, if Oklahoma County is not doing, uh, or not ready to pull the trigger on this, I don't believe that we should be ready to pull the trigger either. And, uh, uh, I would really like to get this done. I know it's set for twenty-twenty-three.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, this area, uh, you try to go down that road on, at around five o'clock, and it is atrocious. So, when would the construction on that start? Would it be twenty-twenty-three?
It would be twenty-twenty-three.
Okay.
Because as you men, you, you saw that we're at sixty-five percent, we're at the right-of-way utility phase. And that's why I kind of need a, an answer from both counties, whether they're in or out, because so we can keep moving, pushback forward on utilities and the right-of-way. And ma'am, to answer your question, my next step is to formally ask Oklahoma County. I'll be formally sending both players to both counties to formally get an answer on their decision, so.
Well, I think, I think our answer is, uh, we're not gonna do it by ourselves.
Right.
We're not opposed, we're not opposed to, to the agreement.
And, 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 I'm, like I said, that's, that was the deal, uh, talking with the Secretary and the Chief with ODOT that we need both counties in. If one county is not in, then we're not, we, we can't move forward.
Right.
With the agreement for the project.
I mean, even, even if we didn't have the SERV funds, I mean, that, that would be just a lot of money for a, a county, especially, you know, with the budget constraints that we have in Logan County, three thousand dollars per mile per year that we get. Uh, that, that's what's, uh, with, right now, four-point-six million. That's, that's a lot of money for us to come up with.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, I make a motion to move forward.
It'll be.
We can't make a motion to it.
Two-point-three.
No, I was just trying to move forward in what manner?
To, to, uh.
Withdraw.
Withdraw. If, if Oklahoma County withdraws, then, uh, the mo, if, if you could phrase it that way, right? So if Oklahoma County's gonna withdraw from the I-35 project, then Logan County will also withdraw as well. Because we can't do it by ourselves.
Yeah.
I'm gonna send you, I'm gonna send you a formal letter.
Let's wait on the action, so, until we get the formal letter. Uh, do you know about how long it's gonna take to get that formal letter?
I'll try and get it next week.
Next week, so we can bring it on fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Meanwhile, meanwhile, I have to submit Encompass because if they go forward, today is the deadline for Encompass.
You can always withdraw.
I can withdraw it, but I have to submit it today.
We're gonna go ahead and submit it anyway, just in case, so.
You're, you're going, you're applying for some ACOG funds, is that what I'm saying?
If due today, so if Oklahoma changes their mind and they choose to go forward with it, then we have to submit the Encompass so that we can go for our funding.
Right.
And what is the funding timeframe on that? It's required to be submitted today. Well, but what, when do those funds sunset, like?
When do you get to spend it?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Okay. Because I was thinking it's probably not their current STVG funds, which is at least the next two years out. So they probably wouldn't even be available until twenty-twenty-five, I, I think, but I'm not sure.
ACOG, Colby and Mace indicated that they were going to be meeting with ODOT within the next two weeks to discuss that project.
Yes.
Yeah, I visited with ACOG a little yesterday and, um, the answer I got was, this is.
this is a great project, there are concerns in constructing it this way, but their participation probably won't be until we construct ours and they're starting accidents. It's really unfortunate, but, um, you know.
So we're gonna table, uh, the I-35 decision today. And so, our, our, really, our decision will be based on what decision Oklahoma County makes. So, I mean, you get the, the letter out to them, you're gonna need, until you get a decision back from them, we know we're not gonna be able to make a decision on what we, what we need to do.
Yeah.
If, if we all, I just wanna make sure we all understand each other on that.
I wanted to say I appreciate, 'cause two of the members that signed this agreement saw the need for this project, and I appreciate your commitment, committing to our funds. Um, sorry that it's not gonna come to fruition that way, but I appreciate your, your diligence and understanding the importance of it, so, thank you for that.
Well, we've been asked that question several times by several people in ODOT. Do you think it's a worthwhile project? And every time it's been asked me, I said, yes, absolutely. Because if you've been in line trying to get on I-35 at Waterloo Road, uh, anytime in the last ten years, you would understand that something needs to be done there, right?
And I was, I went on that, uh, that interchange in Elk City, that, in Beckham County, that has that same design. It's a little confusing at first, first, and it, you're probably gonna have some accidents at first, but once you get used to the, the flow.
Okay, so we're gonna.
We're done on that.
I think, yes, so we're gonna table, I know you've got some quick, maybe some quick.
Yeah, I got it. I got a question, Trenton.
Okay, yes, sir.
The fifty-one project y'all set.
I was gonna ask you about that, yes, sir.
Uh, I think we're gonna close our road so you can't get through traffic down it, not kidding. Now, we, we wanna be a team player, but what, I got an email and said y'all was gonna put some gravel on spots that needed.
Okay.
My concern would be for the people that live on that road, it's dust control. If you're deterring fifty-one traffic down a county road, the, the dust is gonna be horrible.
So, the only, the purpose of that detour is not to detour fifty-one traffic. The purpose of that detour is those two people, those few people that live on that road. We're gonna have to close that county road off at fifty-one when we go in there and reconstruct it. So they're gonna have to go north and then through Orlando, then down seventy-seven. We're just making sure that you're okay with that, that, we're gonna set up a deep, that, that's their detour to go north. We're not gonna detour fifty-one traffic on that road. It was really for those people that live there because when we go to, there's such an elevation difference, we'll have, they'll, they will have direct access to fifty-one, so we'll have to set up a detour for them. And we were asking to use y'all's county roads. They would've done it anyways, but we wanted to formally say, hey, this is our plan, right?
Well, I talked to someone, whoever sent me the email, and, and he said that y'all figured in, I can't remember how many tons of gravel they was planning on putting on that road.
Okay.
So who would be responsible for putting the gravel down, and, and when would that happen?
So, I'll have to check, uh, with that person that, that told you that.
Yeah, I'd like to sit down with, with both of you and go over that if y'all have time.
Yeah, yeah, that, that'll sound, that sounds good. We can, we can do that.
So no, no fifty-one traffic?
No, it is not, and no fifty-one, there will not be fifty-one traffic detoured on that road. It was for those houses that have, that are really close to fifty-one there. We'll have to close that county road and have to have them send it in the other direction, so.
Right. When are we get to this guy and know when I'll be glad to meet you and whatever?
Yes, sir.
Say we get that figured out.
Yes, sir, that sounds good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Trenton, I've got a couple of questions, uh, have to do with the, was it the seven-year plan or eight, what?
The eight-year plan.
Eight-year plan, okay. Uh, sometimes that changes, right? Uh, I know, that was, that was funny, uh, 'cause it changes often, right? And I get that. And, and oftentimes, it changes to our benefit, like Highway seventy-four, when you guys resurfaced that. That was, that was not quite in, in, in plan, in step. You guys did it earlier, and the people of Logan County really appreciate that. One of the questions I had was the, the bridge, uh, on Highway thirty-three, uh, by Western. At Western, it's, uh, the, the bridge was scheduled to be redone this year, uh, this last year, and it was, it wasn't started. Uh, that bridge is, uh, it's not wide enough for, uh, a shoulder. Um, I'm trying to remember what creek that is.
Is that Gar Creek?
It is. Yes, sir, it's Gar Creek.
Okay.
Uh, and the reason I'm asking is the, the water that runs through Gar Creek and down the side drainage is, is undercutting the road, uh, Western.
Okay.
Goes through there. And it, it's to the point, one of our deputies, uh, fell through, uh, into the hole with their, their vehicle, and it damaged their vehicle. And it, and it continues to get worse. I mean, there's, there's a hole there today, but it's, it's, I don't know if anybody's gonna fall through it, but there's, there's a big cavern under there someplace.
Okay.
'Cause it, it washes through pretty, pretty regularly. When Gar Creek gets up, it comes back to the drainage side instead of downstream. It, it flows out.
Okay.
Uh, but anyway, I was curious when, uh, when that bridge might be on schedule. I know you don't have your schedule with you.
Yeah, I can get, I can get you that information.
Okay, I appreciate that. Uh, and then, uh, Highway thirty-three from Kingfisher County back toward Guthrie. Uh, what's, what's the scope on that one?
So.
'Cause it's pretty rough.
So we, that one is in our fiscal year of twenty twenty-one. You should see that project. That project should be going sometime this spring, this summer.
Sweet, okay.
We did move that section of thirty-three up from the Kingfisher Line east, so.
All right.
Because every, there's just that one little portion right there from the county line.
It's, yeah, and it's in terrible shape, as you know, but.
And we, that was a priority for us, and we got that one moved up, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
What, what about State Highway seventy-four from thirty-three to Creston?
Thirty-three to Creston, yes, sir. We have a, we have a, uh, uh, oh, a resurfacing project for that one as well. Um, we were hoping that we could use some of our CARES Act funding, um, that we got to address that, but I have a big issue on I-35 up north.
We don't grab that, man.
I understand that.
We try not to do it more.
Yeah, so, but that one is scheduled for, uh, next year on our resurfacing program, and so, but if there's any opportunity to move that one up, that's, that, that is also at the top of our list as well.
Well, I would ask, if y'all do resurface that, your tie-ins to the county roads, I mean, the last few times, they just come in overlated. So we got, you know, like, four and six-inch humps jumping up on seventy-four.
Yeah, no, that has been a point, um, with, with that residency that oversaw the last one on seventy-four to make sure that we have smooth tie-ins at the end of the transitions with the roads and dryways.
There, there was a misunderstanding between myself and, I think, your deputy over one of those tie-ins. And I, it was not my intent to get him fired up. But, uh, I, I made the mistake of asking him if he knew what a screech was, uh, because I was wanting to make sure that we were talking apples to apples. I wasn't trying to talk down to him at all. I just wanted to.
No, then.
But, but that is, that is a problem, because those, those transitions, coming off of dirt gravel roads, you know, your front end, you stop, and your front end's gotta get over a hump, and you're spinning your tires and trying to get up to sixty-five miles an hour, you know, just to dodge traffic coming, it's.
No, that, that is a, that is a point that we, we, we try to make now, make sure that those are the new transitions.
Yeah, I have one other question for you, and I'll, I'll, uh, turn it back to the board and then hopefully we'll let you go and escape. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about, and, and some action and phone calls from political folks here in Logan County about traffic control signal at Broadway and State Highway thirty-three. Can you kind of give us an update on what you know about that?
Yes, sir. Um, so I've, I've met with the, the, the area legislators as well, and kind of talked about some, some thoughts and ideas that we're gonna look at at thirty-three and Broadway. Um, one thing that we're gonna do in the interim is, um, is we're gonna put some LED flashing stop signs on both sides of the intersection. Um, and then where, where we did have rumble strips, they kind of got, you, you overlaid a little bit there, I think. And they kind of got filled in. They're still there. But, uh, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna provide some raised, raised rumble strips, like the white ones, where you can visually see them and feel them to help with, uh, help, like as a visualization as you approach that intersection. Um, they just completed a survey of that intersection.
But I've seen them out there.
Yes, sir. They just completed a survey, and we're gonna look at the feasibility of adding some turn lanes into that area, getting some left turns, right turns, um, to help get that traffic out of the travelway. So people who are coming from Guthrie or coming east into Guthrie aren't having to abruptly stop because there's somebody in there.
Right.
And, um, so we're, we're looking at some options and looking at the feasibility of that intersection to see what we can do to improve that. Um, so that's, those are a few things that we're, we're looking to do. I met with the city of Guthrie last week as well about some other, uh, places that they're have, they have concerns about, um, along thirty-three. And basically, what I committed to, I guess if you would say, is to look at that section um, and, and see what we can do to help improve, um, the safety through that area. But for Broadway, that, that's what we're looking to do. Um, some other things along thirty-three that, that, some options that we're gonna look at are some centerline rumble strips. I know there have been a few accidents with centerline crossover accidents, um, and, and those are there. The centerline rumble strips would help prevent that, to deter somebody hits them, you know, to get back over. So there, there are some preventative measures that we can, that we can do, and those are some of the actions that we're looking to take, 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 uh, at that intersection and along that stretch of highway.
Right, right, all right, great. I, I got one more question.
I got one also, sir.
About, about a year ago, and maybe you was one that met with the, uh, seventy-four and seventy-four C. Both, both State Highways, the drainage going east. We're having some trouble with the drainage for some folks on the west side of seventy, State Highway seventy-four, where the water won't drain under it and run east.
Okay.
Uh, your survey team come out and Shaw grades on it. It's probably been a year and a half going. I haven't heard anything back.
Let me, let me follow up on that.
Then my next question would be, who would be responsible of cleaning seventy-four C's bar ditches when it runs into the city limits of Creston?
To seventy-four C, that'd be, that'd be us, to clean the ditches.
Okay. But the, the spokes are having trouble with receptive tanks 'cause of the water all back in. Anything you can do to help us, I mean, it would certainly be a team player to get rid of the water.
Okay, yeah, let me, let me follow up on that, and, uh, and I'll, I'll get back with you.
All right, thank you.
One oh five from thirty-three to the road.
Yes, sir. Uh, so we are at, um, sixty-five percent on most of the plans. Um, we, uh, there are a lot of utilities through that corridor, and there's a lot of development out there in that area as well. Um, and we're looking at adding turn lanes, but it's also gonna be curbed and go to curb and gutter to that area just due to the, how close the house, the houses are, plus the utilities. We can't, we can't just go through there and add a bunch of, uh, shoulders and stuff like that. So, um, we're moving on that one, uh, pretty quickly. Um, they're, like I said, they're already at right-of-way, uh, sixty-five percent with that. Um, if you're, uh, Henny Road at the end, we are cutting that grade down to improve site distance at Henny as part of this project. Um, so that, that is part of this project to improve the site distance at Henny in that intersection.
Okay, what about that intersection right there at thirty-three?
That's gonna turn into a signalized intersection.
Okay, because it is, it's just like his Broadway. I mean, that's, we've had multiple accidents at that intersection.
Yep.
We were doing a project not too long ago, and we were there five minutes, and all of a sudden we had a, a hit and run, so.
That will turn into a signalized intersection. That's the intention, okay, to turn it into a signalized intersection.
All right.
I think that's all we got for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, if you have one question. I wanted to go back to the I-35 Waterloo. Um, and if you're gonna remove that from your SERB plan, which it sounds like you are, I just need a formal documentation.
We're, we're gonna wait until we get a, a decision from Oklahoma County. That'll, that'll, our decision will be predicated on what decision I get back from them at that point. Then we'll, we'll talk about what we're doing with our SERB plan for that, for I-35.
Okay. 'Cause I have the funds encumbered, and I know that was the, the unencumbered. I need some formal documentation is all I'm getting at. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I get that. So Trenton, the last thing is, I want to thank you for coming, uh, here and playing whack-a-mole with us. I know that's kind of what you probably feel like, you know, with all the things that are going on. It's, but it's our job collectively to, to look after the interest of the, of the taxpayers and the people that live in our county. And Division Four, uh, you know, encompasses Logan County. We appreciate what you do. And I want you to pass along to the Guthrie, um, manager, ODOT, uh, our thanks for loaning us that load of salt during the big ice storm.
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I, I really appreciated that. It helped us quite a bit. And then the next day, we got it, we got our load in and took it back and, and paid. It, it showed, uh, you know, a, a great working relationship in the beginning of that, and, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Hey, a question on that. Do y'all have a storage building out there you keep your salt in?
Yes, sir.
Well, is there any way that the county can do an interlocal agreement with ODOT, and we, we pay for some in there, and, and we pull out of there instead of us building the facility to put ours in?
That is a possibility.
I would very, I, I'd like to do that.
So, that is a possibility, um.
'Cause our salt leach is out, uh, we don't have it covered.
Okay, okay. Um, I can't, I can't tell you, and I don't know exactly the date when this is gonna happen. Uh, we will be moving eventually further east on thirty-three. Um, and we're gonna combine our interstate yard and our Logan County yards together. So we will get new, um, salt sheds as well. And that would be probably the, another good time to, if we need to increase our capacity, so you guys are able to, to store salt there as well.
I mean, we're, we're always talking about some of the taxpayers' money. That would be one little sample that we can do.
What do you have to do with your old salt shed?
That was my question.
Uh, well.
What about your old yard?
Well, it'll go up for.
It'll go up for sale.
I know Oklahoma, or Kingfisher County took over Kingfisher Maintenance Building. They moved out in that.
I will have to check and verify, 'cause that was, that was done before I got here. So I'll just verify with how we can handle that, if that's something that you guys might be interested in.
'Cause that old salt shed looks like you just take it apart and move it to somewhere else.
Okay.
I'd rather team up than I'm gonna have to take it apart and have it.
Okay.
Anyway, would definitely be interested in saving the taxpayers.
Let me, let me just, I'm checking on that as well. I can do that.
All right. Anything else?
I'm going if you want to.
How many more miles do we have?
And then the last thing I want you to consider is taking responsibility for Waterloo Road. But, we'll talk about that later. So again, thank you all for coming. I appreciate, uh, your time, uh, 'cause I know that's valuable to y'all, to the rest of the taxpayers as well. Any other discussion on item five?
Just going to clarify, so are we gonna not do anything on the SERB today? Or, I guess I'm saying, I think you were several things. I understand the I-35 is waiting for Oklahoma County, so you could leave it, and approve it, and then go in and amend it?
On our SERB plan today, we've approved, uh, the previous designed three-lane curved and gutters for Waterloo Road Phase Three.
Cold train.
Cold train, excuse me.
Right.
Off Water, between Waterloo and Simmons.
So I guess what I'm asking is the plane that I need to send to CED, are you going, are you, are you doing anything on it?
No, we're not, no. We're not gonna modify our SERB plan as of today. She only understands what we're doing, and that it's probably gonna get modified. But it will be one that will be a good modification. We're not adding anything to it. We're actually possibly gonna take things off.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure I'm your student.
Yes, ma'am, appreciate it. Anything else on item five? Going once, going twice? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, like, appreciate your time.
Item, item six, consideration of possible action on cooperative agreement with Chip Keating to donate voluntary services to maintain certain county roads within Logan County District Two.
Uh, here's another one of the cooperative agreements with somebody. He does have his insurance liability. He have already sent the contract through Lowell. He's already, uh, reviewed it and added his, uh, like I say, attorney jargon and, uh, language, and he's ready to pull the trigger. Uh, this is gonna be in the area of Peabody and Waterloo.
You good with it?
I'm good with it. I have a motion. I make a motion on the lead, except.
I'll say, I have a motion in a second to accept a cooperative agreement with Chip Keating. Uh, any further discussion? Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item seven, consideration of possible action on service agreement with Arcade Black for Caosia six zero zero three one, or three I, whatever, for County Clerk's Office.
I'm purchasing a new coffee machine. This is the maintenance agreement for the new machine.
I'll move my approval.
I will second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the maintenance agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item eight, consideration of possible action resolution, accepting five hundred dollar donation from Robert Fields to District One for road materials to be used on Pennsylvania and Forest Hills at that intersection. and Forest Hills at that intersection. We, we've done a lot of work on Forest Hills. From Pennsylvania going out to State Highway seventy-four, that's been rocked and now we need to fill in a mud hole on Pennsylvania. They, Robert, Mr. Fields and his family donated five hundred dollars to do that. That won't buy very much as far as getting it hauled in. But we're, we're planning to fix it anyway, but that will be an incremental, and we appreciate him making that donation to the county.
I'll move where approved.
I will second.
Have a motion in a second on item eight, on the donation of eight, or five hundred dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, item nine, consideration of possible action on resolution to establish a four-way stop at the intersection of Coltrane Road and Forest Hills. This is one of the roads in my district. We've gotten a lot of feedback from the people that live there, that they want to see a different traffic control, set of traffic control there. So before Coltrane Road was fixed through there or widened and improved, the stop sign was on Coltrane Road north-south. So the north-south traffic was stopped there at Forest Hills. Forest Hills is straight shot, all three miles from Broadway to Sooner. During the construction, the construction folks on Coltrane asked if they could stop traffic on, on Coltrane Road to, to slow things down and to help with construction. And of course, we've allowed them to do that temporarily. I asked them to set the traffic control system back like it was originally when they get finished. Well, they got confused and they put the stop signs on Forest Hills instead of Coltrane. So my, my crew went and swapped them back this last week and that precipitated a lot of phone calls from not only the residents, but our, our deputies that, that helped us patrol that area out there. And so with their input and with the input of many of our residents, they've asked us to consider putting a four-way stop at that intersection. And I, I think it's probably a good idea. Damon, you got anything you wanna add today?
I have a question. I'll move where approved.
I'll second.
Remember that section used to be pretty bad.
Have a motion in a second for a four-way stop at Coltrane Road and Forest Hills. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item ten, consideration of possible action on resolution to declare surplus and sell the following equipment from the Langston Fire Department to Granite Voluntary Fire Department. One nineteen eighty-eight hand ladder truck, serial number ending seven six zero zero
I'll make a motion where approved.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second on declaring a fire truck surplus. Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I have nothing for both items eleven and twelve.
Okay, item thirteen, consideration of possible action on approving the following permanent road crossing permits for OGN E. Parallel MacArthur.
Chairman, I think you're on the wrong item.
What?
We've got tort claims to be acknowledged.
Tort claims?
On thirteen.
Oh, I thought you said twelve and thirteen. You didn't have any.
Eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelve, I didn't hear you.
Eleven and twelve, excuse me. All right, thirteen, consideration of possible action to acknowledge notice of tort claim and forward to echo.
We have one from Mark McCamey and one from Mark Gavin of Gobbins.
Do we have any background on this?
The Mark McCamey one, that is a mailbox that one of the graders had backed into. It was a.
That happens.
It's a brick mailbox. Luckily, we didn't take too big of a hit on it. Six hundred and fifty dollars for the
Eight twenty-five ninety-nine.
I was at eight twenty-five ninety-nine.
The other one is a crew doing debris cleanup, cut a dog fence. An invisible dog fence line.
How's that always cut?
It is invisible, yeah.
Just asking.
I, I hadn't heard of that one. So did our guys do that?
I sent it now.
I moved that we acknowledged and sent them forward.
I will second.
Have a motion in a second to acknowledge and forward the claims.
Ninety-five dollars to repair an invisible fence.
Any further discussion? Here you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't like to get in that line of work.
Right? That's kind of like the asymptomatic COVID, right, that you can spread it and you, you got no symptoms, but there's no, and there's no test that can tell whether or not you've got the asymptomatic version of it. Yeah, I wouldn't be in that business too.
So that fence is done and we'll be more down that one.
There you go.
Down three miles.
Okay, back down fourteen. Consideration possible action on permanent road crossing permits for OGN E.
You got them under cover?
Yeah. All right. I will make a motion that we approved. I've already looked at these.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the OGN E line crossings, road crossings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item fifteen, consideration of possible action on consent agenda.
Both of those were your area?
Yep.
District Three.
I'm hoping I sent out an email on this transfer, but I didn't get one, so I did one for you. It's on that equipment that where y'all are chipping in. So on this one, I'll need you to sign here.
That was kind of special to me.
Thank you. Can I get signed twice? So if you get more than one applicant for that, better around forever?
Yes.
Let me know.
Okay.
Especially if they got CBL lines.
Right?
Yeah. But I can tell you, those folks are migrating back to the old building.
Yes, they are.
Probably why you lost your better option, just to be honest.
It cost me sixty-eight bucks to fill up today.
Yeah.
Then Chevrolet truck. I don't drive anything big.
What are you saying?
Yeah, what are you saying? It did cost me ninety-five dollars.
That's why I thought it was a half a ton.
Exactly.
You must have a little. It cost me eighty-seven dollars last month to fill up.
I will fill this one. My wife works in oil and gas, so that is my disline. Pay sixty bucks, sixty mile, go fill down the river.
Move out of the oil.
Can I ask a question on the I-35? Maybe I missed it, but why, why looking at county not willing to grant any CEDs?
He didn't give details. I'm, I'm kind of wondering the same thing, you know? I'm sure they, they've got the funds and if they've already got the funds through ACOG, I don't know why they would pull out from that project, but I have no idea. With the cost of what they're wanting to, to do, it really wasn't that much of, outside of what they already had planned to do, so.
In this part, would, this would be a mile east and west to fix those roads, correct?
Well, our, actually, our portion's not even a mile. It's probably about a little over a tenth of a mile that we would have to do. That adds right around five million dollars already. At sixty-five percent complete, yeah.
Well, you gotta think that there's Oklahoma County residents that live on the south side of Waterloo Road.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see the, that's a horrible, horrible intersection.
It is.
It is.
It is.
And to answer your question, this is the first time that our board's been notified that Oklahoma County would.
And they had an active.
Right.
What's up?
I don't know what happened to them.
And I, I'm actually surprised. I mean, I thought we were gonna have to come in here and figure out something else, but.
Both can be gunfighting.
We, I've been combing through that ever since that was brought up to me last week. And me and Lori, Lori and I have been kind of pulling our hair out about this whole deal. And Lori's been working diligently on getting this put into encompass for ACOG and.
So regardless, it would remain a two-lane road after you exit the highway?
No, it was gonna be a three-lane.
Okay.
But one of the biggest things, I think a large portion of the cost is gonna be from the acquisition from ONQ because the area that they were wanting to acquire goes right there over where their fuel tanks are. Waterloo Road happens to be one of our problem child. It's just, I got called, I had a call today and they were saying, you guys came out and repaired this and it looks like it, it's not a very good job. And I said, well, what road, what lane of road is it on? He's like, oh, it's on the south side of the road. And I was like, well, that's Oklahoma County. That's not me.
Well, the sad part is we don't have more egress and ingress from interstate in our county.
Right.
Yeah, all of that's in Oklahoma County, technically. But I mean, we don't have, we have very few east-west peripheries.
And I wish we could go back to the old agreement when, you know, northeast boundaries because if so, then that would mean that Oklahoma County would be responsible for all Waterloo. But yeah, there's, that system is no longer in place.
Most fans should be up here.
Who's there around? So Lori, you getting all acclimated with ACOG and all that stuff?
Um, yeah, it was like drinking water from, from a fire hose there this past week.
I'll bet.
I'm trying to find for the chairman to sign and alcohol is over chat.
Chris lost interest today.
He takes a special interest in the alcohol.
Let's go back to drinking water.
Did it go way down?
Thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
That's pretty good, like you're saying.
Yeah.
They must've traveled away for spring break.
This is March, so that's January 1st.
I don't know.
It was cold.
Have you seen the decrease in drunks out there, chairman?
So, okay, so when you exit the highway, it'll still be a two-lane to Sooner?
I guess. Whatever shows on that map.
I think it's gonna be a, a three-lane almost to Sooner.
Yeah, they have a turn on interchange. They have a turning lane heading back to turn down to Oklahoma City area, but they do not have a turning lane to go north. So it's less important to go north than it is to go south.
There's an invisible fence through there.
I have that contract, but I bother.
Yeah, still want to be there.
There really is an invisible fence there. Maybe we can do the same thing with right-ofways, invisible right-ofways.
Invisible shoulders.
Invisible, oh, curbs and gutters.
It's there. You just can't see it. You know, you don't get, can't get sewer or water either one. That kind of makes it an invisible fence. You can't build there. Just saying.
Can't build much here. Build a house. BPA probably owns that or EQ.
Somebody had to mention it today.
Ooh. That's right.
I'm getting phoned up today. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda when you get done with it now.
I will second.
All right, give me just a few minutes, gentlemen. I'm on Highway District Two, blankets right now. Wow. Nine thousand dollars alcohol tax for Guthrie. That's not much.
Everybody went away for spring break?
And she's back at work. Get this glue. He owned a marijuana tax. The year twenty twenty, they collected fifty-four point five million dollars. That's four and a half million bucks a month.
Not bad.
All that goes to the sheriff's department or?
Yeah, the donor fund.
It wasn't quite cut though.
They're, they're not getting full donors, they're getting the donor holes.
Yeah, yeah. Figured I'd be too.
That's a lot of money for a half million a month.
It's a moving industry.
Black market's hitting there.
You're right. Yeah, the only board is the legal ones.
They're popping up all over the place.
Oh, my God.
Grow houses are popping up all over the place.
Right now they are.
Yeah.
Just a place to hide.
What is it, New York just made it recreationally, uh, legal?
I think they're gonna be cutting down on those soon.
Well, eventually, the amount you can have alcohol by permanent dismal purposes is a felony in most states that's recreational.
Wow.
So a motion in second on consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, item sixteen, consideration possible action on claims for payment for March twenty twenty-one.
So where do you buy salt? Is it just hanging out somewhere and you go pick it up?
Yeah, at the Morton Salt Place in Utah. I don't. Where, where do we buy salt?
Kansas.
Kansas. We sent a truck up there to get a load.
That's a good question. I haven't thought about that.
Yeah. That's just wild.
Kansas and their famous salt mines.
Did I know that?
You know what else they do with salt mines in Kansas? Their document storage facilities.
Cause they're dry.
There's several of the county clerks in the state that have sent their books and stuff to be stored in the salt mines.
Wow. It's a natural desiccant.
Yes.
Don't want to be a scar in there. Just looking at one of the other compliances. Just thinking about how we can torture that person, but probably shouldn't.
Mine?
No. No.
I forget what Wayne's talking about. I had one under this.
Wouldn't you?
I couldn't remember if mine was this one or the, the last though.
No.
I've recently had one.
Wasn't, wasn't anybody in this room?
Been around it too long.
Is that it? A motion to approve.
I'll second Cody's motion.
I have a motion in second to approve claims for payment for March twenty twenty-one. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item seventeen, consideration possible action on purchase card payments for March twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, now some of these smaller vendors, can, can we not use the, if they accept cards, can we not use it?
When you say.
Well, I say, say I have a mechanic that I've worked on.
The problem with that is.
Weather station.
There's only three P cards in the county and we can't hand them off to someone.
Well, they, they come by your office.
I mean, we've got a little swipe thing.
Yeah, it's on the front.
I have to check on that.
Have a motion in a second on purchase cards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item eighteen, any citizens are being heard. Uh, now's the time when you can ask that question about I thirty-five interchange. You all right?
I'm good now.
You're good now, okay? All right. Hearing none. Item nineteen, comments, announcements, questions by the board of county commissioners.
Uh, update on the six-story building. They did their final walkthrough on Monday. Uh, D Q's supposed to be known at a letter saying it's all clear and, and done. Uh, estimated cost, they, I think they made a P O for like a hundred and twenty thousand to pay for the removal.
Wow.
Uh, the building's fairly clean and I might add to the board that the roof is looking pretty good. Might want to check into roofing. If you wanted to add in.
I, uh, I think we probably should add that to our next agenda item to talk about, uh, driving that building in now that we've got it cleared. And we can technically work in there and, and improve it.
And the district attorney, she sent me an email. They have removed all of the files from the county building.
Excellent. I thought that was a great, great deal, so. Hope there's room for us to improve. So, okay. Anything else, Bonnie?
I, that's all again.
Again, I want to thank you and your, your folks, your roadheads for, for helping us get that done over there.
Glad we got through.
Yeah, so all of us are. Thank you very much for, for helping us out on that. Okay?
Uh, just want to kind of give an update. We are trying to get back on track with everything. Of course, right now I'm looking for an operator with a C D L also. Uh, so also I want to thank Monty and our efforts in getting Prairie Grove done for the deep, uh, deep patching there. Uh, I've heard a lot of great things and compliments about that since we've done it. Uh, been working, we went out with O E M, uh, Oklahoma Environment Emergency Management. Uh, did some assessments. We also did the assessment with the junior high. And where we were at for Logan County, we had to be like at a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We exceeded that threshold by, uh, four hundred and twenty-five thou, four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So that is going to try to get, uh, a category C to where we can, uh, get some more assistance through FEMA to, uh, if it gets approved to, uh, for the winter storm, so. Uh, other than that, uh, like I said before, I wish we had, wish we had that one that we could just wave over the county, the county map to make all the roads better, but we don't. And just be patient, we'll get to you.
Thank you. Um, I've, uh, got one thing on the conference room remodel update. And that is on the, uh, for repair, the repair and replace the carpet that's in here. Uh, that when we moved the wall, let that hole there. Uh, the cup, the cost is two, two thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Uh, we've got the carpet swatch on the desk out here. If you want to look at it, it, it almost exactly matches what we've got in here. But that's to put carpet in here and in the new smaller conference room that we, we just opened up over there. Um, and without, uh, without objection, we'll proceed with that. So that's kind of where we're at on, on that. And that's all I've got, gentlemen.
If I can for this moment, uh, just as a reminder, or in case you haven't seen your email yet, we found out yesterday that our local drug testing agency we've been using has suddenly closed. I am in the hunt for the nearest because we don't have anyone certified, uh, to do the work that we need done locally. Um, I've reached out to our neighboring counties to see who they use, but it looks like that to get a certified, uh, company, we're probably gonna end up either sending our folks to unit or Oklahoma City.
I talked with Cassidy this morning. She's got a friend that works at that med clinic that just opened up on Division.
We're checking it out.
And she said that her friends that they could do all the, all the tests that we need.
We have calls going out today to them.
Talk about express, express wellness.
The one there by the, by the fairgrounds, yes.
Yeah, express wellness. Does Mercy not do that anymore?
The problem that we have with like Mercy is those.
Insurance.
Randoms and, and whoever does it because of the new federal D O T laws with the clearinghouse, they've got to be accepting a third party administrator to go into the clearinghouse and report. And, you know, the, the D O T certification part is, is the big. And so we're on it. We just don't have anyone right at this moment that we're trying to get that tracked out.
The only other place I know it might be concentric in Edinburgh.
Yes, but again, I, I'm hoping to find something close. Um, I will warn you all that, that the cost is probably gonna be double or more than what we have with the local provider, so.
The local provider wouldn't provide much, so.
She also said that, you know, she's got somebody that's supposed to be taking over, but.
Once they're certified, I have no idea what, you know? The, the problem is we got to have it now.
Yes.
Even if it's a temporary fix till a new local comes into place, we have to have someone.
You're gonna continue to look for a provider for that.
So does that mean our hiring right now is on hold?
We're, we're in a pickle.
Well, throw out a question for, for our hires, since we don't qualify for D O T, can we go back to your court temporarily?
I personally wish you wouldn't, but I'm not gonna stop you. I don't think I can stop you. I just, their paperwork and their methods of doing things have never been compliant for anything, D O T or not, you know? I understand you've got new hires to do. They will not, they're not D O T certified for, for that. I mean, I'm not gonna stop you from going back over there.
Well, so if the sheriff needs to do new hires this week, what do we do?
We'd have to go to, uh, until I get back to the office, see what else we've turned up. I mean, if county.
Well, we'll push it as long as you can. Well, that's, that's what I'm getting at. But if you need, if you need to hire somebody, Damon and I, I think if we can get that done through drug court temporarily.
Right.
Until we find a full-time somebody to do it, then I, I don't see a big problem with that.
But say what if I need to hire somebody?
Then we've got to find us a D O T certified. Okay.
All right, uh, entertain the motion for item twenty. I'll move away from here. I will second. A motion in second. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
One hour and six.
What?
That's a long time to sit, Monty.